In part, and because of that, that created what you just described.
Yeah, yep.
Because they had time to kill.
Off of this real quick. All right, well, I guess if Mr. Shields is going to show up, he'll, he'll be in and.
Yeah.
At some point, let me, I'm shutting off my other, my work computer so it doesn't annoy me over there. Um, with that said, uh, let's, um, go ahead and call this meeting to order and, uh, so we can get, get going. Find out anyway, all that's gonna go away. All right. All right, so I guess we, uh, do our pledge allegiance here. There we go, we got our flag. All right, thank you Tracy. All right, everybody join me in the pledge allegiance, ready, begin. Uh, pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, I think we all kind of know the protocols here. We're the only ones online at the moment, so we don't really have any public individuals to worry about at this time, but, uh, um, I think we all know our vision and mission statements, so, uh, I think we can just jump right in and, uh, see what we've got to talk about.
Well, here's what, a few things that I want to talk about, and we've taught, we, we started to begin this discussion at a community forum in February, talking about the potential of running a capital projects levy and an EP and O levy in November. And realistically felt pretty good about that for a couple of months. And, uh, it just, it's kind of, you know, exploded or whatever. And as much as I would like to run that in November, I think that's ill advised. Um, I, I just don't think that trying to get school reopened and in the mode that we need to and running a, a levy and a capital projects levy, I don't think there's time in the day. I don't think there's an avenue to get the information out. And I just think people's minds will be, will be on other things. So, uh, I, I, I just, I do not see it being a wise move to run the measures in November. And I, I don't, and I got, I've got some feedback from two or three of you that pretty much confirmed or agreed with me, or I agreed with you. I don't know how you want to phrase it, but before we talk, is, is that kind of where everyone else is at?
Yeah, I mean, for me, and I'll lead, I can lead off, I think, uh, you know, there just, yeah, some of those factors, the other kind of extraneous factor is, is just that, you know, A, we don't know what going back is going to look like completely now. And we do know that, um, although we got some, uh, yeah, and I, and it'll be interesting to see what the feedback comes back on the survey and how that looks, um, but there's going to be a, a lot of, um, I, I know that there's some tension out there just regarding opening and how that's going to be handled and, uh, and that'll be kind of right after that point too. And, and, uh, you know, if we've got a lot of displeased people about just how the process, whether it's because we're following mass protocol, or we're not doing enough of the mass protocol, it, it just, it just may turn off some, some positive voters even at that point too. So I think that's another factor that, that gets brought into this, uh, that, that's, that's kind of my thoughts. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd, I'd jump in and say, I agree. Um, and it's amazing how, uh, my enthusiasm for wanting to do it in November originally, uh, perhaps this time last year, um, has completely reversed. Um, you know, without getting political, um, I think the election is, has lost a lot of steam. Um, you know, no matter what side you're on or who you're hoping for. So there, there's a potential apathy issue we may be dealing with. Um, and then the other one is, yeah, the, the key focus for the people we're trying to gain support from, um, is on what school is going to look like. And so with that noise, and understandably so, um, that, I think that would really dilute an effective campaign uh, and really articulating, um, not only just what I say, would say is a basic ask of the EP and O, but any sort of supplemental ask we may, uh, consider. So I would be in, in favor of, uh, Rob's recommendation.
Brandino, this is Jim.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim, I was muted there.
No problem. Um, yes, I can, uh, agree with those, uh, assessments. I would though like to, we should have a calendar of the dates that we would need to have a resolution. To the county is February, that's, that resolution typically is due during, um, winter break type thing. And of course, you know, none of us can, right now, would say be able to see what winter break or even what, uh, September looks like. But, uh, having, uh, I think we'll have a better idea of what the finances are going to be here when the roll is around. And, uh, um, we do have some leeway and, uh, getting something on, on a ballot. Uh, but, uh, there, there's no doubt that we're going to need an EP and O in the future. But maybe this will give us a little more breathing room to gather some, uh, a camp, a, uh, citizens group to help with the campaigning type side of the, of the aisle. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds good. Larry, Larry's got his hand up over there. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we had talked about two levies. Now, my understanding is that the capital, uh, project levy expires at the end of 2020 and therefore the flow of revenue stops, whatever, for January 1st, I guess. And then there's the EP, EP and O levy, which we are going to have to run. And, um, I would recommend we run it in February in case it, um, lacks the 50% plus one, so we can run it again in April. Um, so, uh, I guess two questions, any thought to running the capital projects levy before that, so we could, uh, have money next year to work on things? And the EP and O, I don't think there's any, um, we gotta do that one. And we pretty much know exactly how much we gotta ask for, I think. But if we get a major cut, we may have to ask for more. So am I in the right ballpark there?
Yeah, I'll answer those questions, um, as best I can. Uh, first off, I'll go to Jim's, we have to have a ballot measure to the audit auditor by December 11th. I, I have something from John Gores and so, and the election would be February 9th. So, uh, it's, it's 45 calendar, I don't know if it's 45 calendar days or workdays, whatever. Um, and try and best to answer Larry's question about running a capital projects levy in November and turned around and running an EP and O levy in February. The real tough part about that is a lot of people will say, didn't we just vote for this? And they, they are confused, they get confused and know, and, um, the turnaround time to get our message out isn't very big. You know, you're going from like basic, uh, the month of December, the month of January, because it's an all mail-in ballot. People will be getting their ballots somewhere in the neighborhood of January 15th, plus or minus a few days. So to be able to get a completely new message out in 45 days would be difficult and confusing for many of our voters. I, I, I wish it weren't, because I do, I, I do agree with you about that there, there won't be a flow of money to take care of some of our major facility issues for a year. Did I answer?
Answered mine, that's good.
So. Well, but I do want to answer the last part of your comment. Um, we, we, you know, you said we could ask for more. We will ask for the maximum. There's, there's a finite amount of money that we can ask for. It's either the lower of $2,500 per student or, uh, $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. It is the lower amount, and because of our high assessed valuation, it will end up being somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,500 per student. But that will be, the, the amount we can run for will be decided by, um, the county treasurer, assessor, and our, our bond council.
Thank you.
All right, Eric, I got your hand up there. Thanks.
Sure. Um, and this, the, the only, this sort of, um, sort of, uh, is, is in line with, um, with concern about the, the, the flow of, flow of funds. So I, I guess to, to request if, uh, Dr. Clark can expand on that. Uh, in, in addition to having the funds still continue through for the projects, I'm thinking about it from a, from a taxpayer perspective. Does that, does that mean that there would be an end to a certain, um, taxes being collected? And then, so there'll be a period of time without that capitals, capital levy tax? And then, and then it will be a new tax that will then start again? Is that correct?
I'll try and answer your question as best I can.
Okay.
Okay. In 2017, in February, this district ran a capital projects levy and a, an EP and O levy. The capital projects levy was for three years. The EP and O levy was for four years. And, you know, Gary Neal was the superintendent when that happened and, uh, two or three of the five of you were on the board, I'm not sure. And I believe to, you know, not put words in anybody's mouth, but I really believe the intention was that, the reason why there's a difference in three years versus four was that we would run a bond issue to build a, a, a major project and in, on the fourth year, and then turn around and run the EP and O levy the following year. That's what I believe was the intention. Or another, if, if the mood in the community wasn't quite right yet, we'd run another capital projects levy. I think in a little bit of hindsight, and I've been able to be, get on board quicker and things like that, um, maybe, maybe we should have ran one in February. I'm, I, I wasn't ready to do that. I, I'm not sure the district was ready to go after one either, but it didn't happen. And that's water under the bridge. So, then to, to give, to answer your question, the capital projects levy sunsets, dies December 31st. So we will not collect any significant capital project money after uh, the October, uh, taxes come in. Now, there'll be, if, there'll be a dollar here, a dollar there that float in from unpaid taxes and those type of things, but no significant money. Our levy, we will get that levy through December 31st, 2021. So that tax rate won't change. So to tell the taxpayers, uh, the, the tax rate on the capital projects was, uh, stair stepped. And it was like 16 cents the first year, 35 cents the next year, and 80, uh, 80 cents the third year, the, the year we're currently in. It was stair stepped to meet the levy and to come up with a total tax rate. And understand that I'm, those estimates could be, uh, one or two cents differed. So this past year, we paid, taxpayers in Squim paid approximately, oh, Tracy, bring up the, um, the levy memo on the second page. Okay, go to the second page, please. And for us who are visually challenged, could you make that a little bit bigger? So this year, we paid $1.29 and 67 cents. So next year, if you look at the February election, the second, we will not pay any on the capital projects levy. So our taxpayers, uh, taxable amount to schools will go down somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 65 cents per thousand. And, and our EP and O levy will make, will be approximately the same. So, um, one of the things that our capital projects levy did was it was, for all practical purposes, for one item, the food service building. We were able to take care of a few other things, a fence at Haller, a roof at the middle school, and a couple of other small items. But, but the overwhelming majority of the capital projects levy went to the food service building. This upcoming capital projects levy that I'm recommending will take care of a lot of smaller projects, anywhere from a hundred to $500,000. So, um, you know, and honor, honor around three and a half million dollars a year for three years. So a little bit different end result with the capital projects levy that I'm recommending. And we'll go to that spreadsheet later in the presentation. But that, um, so to be fair to your question, we really have not done anything with the capital projects levy other than build the food service building.
Yeah.
Did I answer your questions?
Yeah, I, I, and just, if, if for some, like, if it were to run in, um, if it were to run in February, and for some reason, and I, and to bounce back to the, um, well, I guess it doesn't matter either of them, are there, there are certain rules about when it can run again if it doesn't pass? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, 45 days. But it's a, the next time it could be run, either the EP and O or the capital projects levy, you can run them twice in a calendar year. And you can, um, uh, the, you have to have 45 days, there's certain, there's, there's not every month, there's a, uh, next year, there is, I'm looking at what John Gores sent me. There's, uh, there's a, you can run in, um, there's four times, I believe. February, April, August, and November. Those are the four months that you can run a ballot measure. If you fail in February, then if you want to get that, you want to be guaranteed when you do your budget, you gotta, you almost have to run again in April. Uh, so then at least you will know what you have or what you don't have.
Right. Okay. All right, yeah, I think that answers my question about the, uh, the April would be the next, next date. And, um, just to also, um, I mean, sum up kind of where I'm at. I definitely appreciate wanting to be, needing the time and to run the effective campaign. I do, I, I do think it's regrettable not to, not to capture a high voter turnout on an, on an issue related to education, but I, I can see where that can cut both ways, given our current climate. So, um, yeah.
All right, so I see Jim's hand up. I just wanted, uh, to quick interject, um, as well, and I know we all got a bunch of questions, but I, but I think Dr. Clark's got some presentation stuff as well that, uh, probably, as we can see, like with these documents here, uh, might be, might actually answer some of the questions that we have. So, uh,
Tracy, go, go back to that, or go back to the first page of that, uh, document you brought up, please. I, I gave you this document, I want to say two board meetings ago, but it may be three. It just describes, it's the, I literally did not change anything. Describes the levies in the, that we have currently on the books and what it needs to pass and, and, um, all those things. I do want to mention one other thing that is, that really worried me before I had, before I got some different information. What I was really concerned about was running in February after the November election was validation. Because, uh, again, not to be political, but we know there's going to be a lot of people vote in November. I was concerned about validation, but you do not need validation for an EP and O levy. So that alleviated that concern. You do for a capital projects levy. And, uh, so that is the situation. But this is a document that you've seen before. Um, I haven't, I didn't change it. Um, it, 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 it is recommending that we run in November. But, uh, I just, I, I, I think there is consensus on the board that we're better off in February. So let's go to the other document that I want to go to is, uh, the spreadsheet, please.
Brandino, I just got a text from, uh, Michael DeShill. He's trying to, uh, sign in. He said his, uh, link isn't working.
Anything you can help with there, Tracy?
Yes, I will go ahead and email him the link. I, I don't know if that's him on the phone. We did have someone join us. But I will go ahead and do that.
Thanks.
I, I created this spreadsheet. It's, it's fairly, uh, self-explanatory. There's another sheet that goes along with this that kind of explains. But for this year, for this year, this is where we, I, um, project that our expenditures from levy dollars are going to go. I used April's, uh, Darlene had figures through April when I created this. And so I extrapolated some numbers, but you'll see that where we spent the majority, you know, district-wide support. And again, I have a sheet on the next page, special education that's not funded by the state, basic ed, food services, and transportation. Those are, those are all areas that the, the state funding formula doesn't take care of. And, or we are, you know, the prototypical mo, staffing model and those things. But what you'll see, and I don't see, uh, essentially, our levy is 17% of our budget, give or take half a percent. So to try and run and, uh, this school district without 17% of your budget, it would, with, you know, without going into dramatic and, uh, detail, it would be a shell of itself. And, um, I, you're going to see a few districts going through that. North May, there's, North Mason had a double levy failure. And, um, I, I, I just don't, I know this district, and I want to say, oh, three, oh, four, one of those years had a double levy failure. Um, I'm not positive, uh, was there anyone living in Squim during that period of time or associated with the school district? Any of the board members? So it's not something I would wish on my worst enemy to have a double levy failure. So that's the expenditures, I, I, I just wait before, so go to the next, uh, the levy explained, uh, district wide, uh, the, a next memo, Tracy, that says there. No. Oh, I, I, I gave you the wrong one. I'm going to have to get you. But when, when it, take that, that's, I, I emailed you the wrong document. But go back to that spreadsheet, please. The main criteria, the main issues for district-wide support are most utility expenditures come out of district-wide support, additional classified support, all co-curricular contracts, whether it be athletics, band, choir, all of our clubs, all, a lot of the expenditures that are related to that. And a great deal of it also goes to technology. Basic ed funds additional teachers, additional paraeducators, and additional administrators if we need them. Special ed services are those that aren't supported by, uh, or aren't financed by OSBI or the federal government. Transportation and food services, those issues speak for themselves. So those are the majority of the expenditures. As we move forward with the campaign and the issues, I'll get a little bit, we, we'll get a little bit more finite on what exactly those expenditures are. But, um, that's where we're at right now. I'll stop. I see there are a lot of questions.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Jim had his hand up for a while, so I'll let him, uh, go first.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think a couple of things. Yes, thank you. Um, I think a couple of things um. To remember on the capital project levy and, and the purpose of that one was um, aid to, to tear down the old community school, which we had condemned and. And put offline um, since two thousand twelve. And then, and then have a, a base kitchen type thing. And then from there, you know, we uh, it finished mostly on time and under budget. Which enabled us to have that, those remaining funds which then were used on. Um, the Helen Haller Finch project and a couple of other security things, I believe. So it's. It's important that we remember those successes with that and then the purpose of that bond or that levy. The other things that typically resonate with our voters is when you hold a levy. Or bond campaign during the general election. Cause that's the typical question we'll get, that we could be faced with is, well, it's, it's cheaper to run it in November during a general campaign. Um, why didn't you do that? Um, cause when we run it during the special ones, typically that's, the sole cost of running that election is bore on the. The taxing district that's running the levy. Unless there's someone else, say like at the library or fire district or someone else like that was also running a, an item during those special elections. Uh, but with that being said, it is um, recognizable of the challenge that. We are at right now at just trying to open the, the building to education. Um, in September, and that's one of the, that is the biggest challenge we have right now. But we don't want to lose sight of those other uh, financial needs with the levy and that on the legislative side. Wasda is, is uh, pushing hard to the legislators to keep our levy rate as is. And what Dr. Clark, thank you for on your levy memo there. That's what it currently stands. And um, we're. Pushing hard to the legislators to not cut that any with the shortfall. That's going to occur and be faced by all two hundred ninety-five school districts. So that will be part of the legislation push. And. And yes, I was uh, I was on the Helen Haller PTO, PTA in two thousand three and four when. That double levy occurred and so that's what got me uh. Starting to get involved in all of uh, school district funding type thing. But otherwise, thank you very much, Dr. Clark, for the memo that provides. And, and then your outline of the capital project needs. Um, is that, that's always a question we get from the public is uh, what are those, what are those lists of items? And so. Thank you for having that out there for us.
All right, Eric. Do you have anything? Or did you just leave your hand up?
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Are, is there a later point, Dr. Clark, when you're gonna, are you gonna talk more specifically about those, those lists? The list of items for the capital project levy? Cause if so, I'll hold off on my questions there.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes, I'm good. That's gonna be the last uh, item on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I have, I have some questions related to that, but I'll, I'll.
You bet.
Okay, I think that's all the hands I see right now.
Let's go to that capital projects, please, the spreadsheet. Now, this, this is a list that John McCandy has generated for, for us. For the district, and I think it's something that he's updated over the course of. I'm going to say three to five years. I don't know that for a fact. I am a little bit, I am concerned about. Um, just the estimated amounts and at some point in time as we move forward. I will bring some people in to give us more significant uh. Estimates of those, cause I, I, I'm taking John's word for them. I don't know if he's updated them. I, for me, this is a starting point, not an ending point. I also think that with the additional time. That we'll have not running in November, these lists can be viewed by our community. And, and discussed by the community of. And, and defended by the school district or not defended by the school district. Maybe we don't need that. Maybe we do. Maybe we need more of that. And that's where we have the discussion with the community. And the biggest difference between this capital projects levy and the previous capital projects levy is this. When we ran that capital projects levy, we had the one major project. Ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of the issue went to that food service uh, facility. Well, that was a, I'm gonna say ten million dollar project, if not maybe a little more, a little less. We had to borrow the money, you know, in, in something and I, they used to call them tans. I'll ask Darlene here in a minute. But we borrowed the money on, on future tax revenues. And like I said, they used to call them ta- tans, tax, tax anticipated notes. But I know the terminology has changed since I came back to the state of Washington. But one of the negatives about that was the interest that we paid. Towards that note has to be taken out of general fund. So the intention of this capital project. List and or of, and the work will, we will not borrow against that money. So we will receive our first allocation of capital project dollars. In April of twenty-two. And whatever we put in tier one and we'll prioritize these projects. This projects A, B, C, and D need to be done in April, eh, with April's revenues. Uh, E, F, and G will be done with October's revenue. So we will have our bidding process and, and those, those issues will be shovel ready. We will not have to borrow against the total amount. And we'll, we'll have a series of projects that will go over a three-year period. And again, hopefully take care of the majority of the facility issues and run a bond issue in twenty. Four, twenty-four, twenty-five, I, I don't know, for a new building and whether. And at that time, I don't know that it will be an elementary school or, you know, an upgrade to the senior high. I, I just know that that would be a time that we could run a bond issue. Involving community discussion of what our biggest needs are. And it is my hope and I will put every ounce of effort towards it that um. This, these projects mirror the. Food service capital projects levy in that we, we get done what we say we're gonna get done. We get it done and that on time. And hopefully under budget. You can't, that's, but no, on budget, no less than on budget, but preferably under budget. But I, I uh. These lists, and I think, I think that's something uh, Eric was alluding to. I'm, this is a starting point, not an ending point. And you never know uh. You know, in the three-year cycle. That we get done the first years, we get done the second years and all of a sudden. We have a need and that, that, that could be something that's addressed. And that will be, I'm sure when we're talking about the capital projects levy to our patrons and our constituents. Those will be questions that are asked. So that's what I see with this list. Um. I, I, you know, just looking through this, I, I know one of the big lists. One that's big on my list personally is we need a complete revamp of our phone system. There's gonna come a time in the near future that our phone system just is gonna uh. Not work for us. The ability, the ability or inability to transfer calls and, and a lot of other things uh. Are just archaic about our phone system. That's a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, but. That's a discussion for another day. I think there, if I ask each administrator in each building, they probably have their own pet peeve. We've talked, if you look at the front pay, um, three of our four, or three of our five buildings. Have water and uh, sewer pro- sewer issues, Haller, OPA and uh, Gray Wolf. So those are some things I'm happy to answer questions as best I can.
All right, Eric, uh, you've got a hand up.
Thank you. Um, so when it. I answered one question and I, I appreciate that, the different tiers. So um. The, which, which correlate to the, the year in which the, the, the money will come out. So I appreciate that. Um. The next question I had was um, with Squim High School, it talks, and I think it just got cut off a little bit there. Squim High School, it talks about classroom upgrade and modernization. It looks like it's science and then something is cut off. Do you know what else? That applies to?
I'm looking. CTE.
Okay. Thank you. And when it's uh, when it has the district costs, I just wanted to clarify, is that a, is that a cost associated with? With things at the district office or is that a district-wide or?
Um, district-wide, like phone system, that's district-wide.
District-wide, okay.
Security cameras, lock system, but that, that would be uh, throughout the district.
Throughout the district, okay. All right. Um. And I think while the. The, I guess the, the, the big question, I know this relates to the, the timing and everything else that we're, we're considering is. Are we, are we potent, there are some, obviously all of these things, there's a need. But by delaying it from, instead of doing it in November, running it in February. Are there, are there items on this that are, you know, talk about the sewer, sewer issues, those type of things? What, what potential um, major risks do we have by, by pushing that off a few months?
I don't know that I can answer that question adequately. Uh, but I, I would agree with you that there probably are risk. Um, the sewer system coming to mind. Um. I, I. No different than uh. Could there be expenditures that we, capital expenditures that we need to take care of during the twenty twenty-one? School year, the fall of twenty-one, that if we ran in November and passed. Yeah, I, I, but I, 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 I think that's an accurate statement. I'm a little bit struggling for words, cause I don't disagree with you. I guess it's, it's just got to the point where I, I. To run a, to run a ballot measure in November and not do a great job with the community is a, a self-defeating. Uh, process in and of itself.
Sure. And, and sort of a, sort of a follow-up to that question, I, I um. I under, I understand that, that we wouldn't actually be spent, the money would, would come in and then it would be spent. So there's no need to, to borrow on that money. And thus no, no need to pay interest out of the general fund. And I, I, I definitely think that's the ideal way to go. Innocent, let's say it passes in February, but in a situation where all of a sudden. Something significant does happen and we have to look at all options with, with, would it still be on the, on the, would that still be an option at that point if there was some sort of major?
The potential in that, and I, I probably yield a little bit to Darlene on this, cause she's been in this state more recent than I have. I would assume that we could borrow against future tax revenues. Is that correct, Darlene? Are you muted, Darlene?
Yeah, she's, she's muted if she's talking.
Rob, not to be obnoxious, cause I'm not Darlene, but I'm pretty sure that that's the case. And in fact, that's what we did with the last levy, correct?
Yeah, I, 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 it, it would be a short-term, you know, like, let's say we needed, you know, five hundred thousand dollars and I throw that out. Just we, we, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure. In fact, typically when that happens, you actually use a local. The last time I did that, I used a local bank.
Okay.
It didn't go through a bonding process. We used, when I was in Reardon, we used the local US bank. So I'm guessing we can.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing in, in planning to do it the way that you described, which again, I agree with um. That there was nothing that, that, that stopped you once that plan was established, anything stopped you from doing it. So.
And. If you, you, you'd borrow five hundred thousand dollars on a one-year note. And yes, you would have to take the property tax, excuse me, the interest out of uh, general fund. But we, we get it, interest rates are low. I think they're gonna continue to be low for a while and I think. The expend, while it still would be an expense, it would not be major. It would not be as, as much as the expense was to borrow ten million. For the uh, what you move uh, food service facility.
Okay. Um, all right. I think that is all I had for questions on this. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Yeah, that's cor- that's correct, uh, Jim. Yeah, that we was a, it just, it was just a uh. Um, a vote of the board to go ahead and uh, um. Get the interest, uh, get, get the loan against the board, the um. The, the money that we needed. Is correct. And uh, um, anyway, I don't know if you wanted to add to that, Jim. I seen you, you had your hand up, but you typed in the uh, in the box there. You're, you're welcome to speak if you choose to, Jim.
Okay, I hit the need. Um, yes, it's called a non-voter secured debt process and uh. I think as I, my memory is correct, it was a, a, an outstanding interest rate and it was somewhere around it. From two point five to three percent or may, maybe in that ballpark, but uh, it uh. And that enabled us to start the projects, cause otherwise um, you can't start those projects until. We've actually received from the county, uh, the tax collections. And doing it with the non-voter, you can um, secure debt, you can um, go out and start. You can go out and start projects prior to the money coming in.
Yep. I think everything you could conceivably do, and I'm not, this is not a recommendation, but you can also borrow against school district funds. So in other words, if you, if we had, and I'll use our cash reserve of $2 million, you can borrow against that as well. You can borrow money from the general fund. Now, you have to pay interest back to yourself, but I believe there's also a way you can borrow money from yourself. And I know school districts that have got into financial distress have done that, borrowing against transportation funds and some other things. But that's a conversation for another day.
Yeah, and those would be factors that would, back to what Eric's question earlier, was if we had, you know, a sewer system that just backed up and flooded a school, and we had to fix it immediately. Other than that, you know, a lot of those, and those probably, yeah, there are probably, in my view, there are projects that are on that, that could fit in that at a critical potential stage. But there's a lot of them that are there that also, you know, wouldn't cause that. So those would just fit into that category, and we'd be fine waiting for, you know, that's, it's the gamble that we play by going to February versus November. But I think, you know, again, we have a better shot overall. Go, taking them both at the same time and wait until February. Did you have something, Eric, or you still have your hand up there? There you go.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just making sure.
I'm not a very good student, you know.
You're that student that sits, that wants to answer all the questions, has got his hand up the whole time, right? No, Suzie, you've answered enough today. Yeah, all right. Okay, what do we got next? Anything to add there, Dr. Clark? And you are actually muted.
I don't expect a vote, but I would like direction from the board and/or consensus that we run our ballot measures in February. And then, you know, we need to have the ballot titles and all that stuff done by December 11th, and which is plenty of time. And I will move forward and consistently update. I am in the process of, I've set up a levy committee meeting next week, and I'm gonna give the individuals, and most of them, most of the individuals are people you recommended. It'll probably get a little bit bigger from there. And I'm gonna talk about the same thing to them that I'm talking to you about. And we're gonna move forward if I get that direction from the board.
Well, I guess from the chair seat, you know, it sounds like we have a consensus that we're we're on agreement, that, you know, waiting probably is in our best interest. You know, whether we need to vote to make that or not at this time. I mean, we are in a, this is a public meeting, so we could take a motion if so desired. But then if we have, if we have motioned it, at this point, it would lock us into February, unless we, you know, rescinded that at some time in the future.
Chair, this is Director Stoffer. I'll make a motion that we proceed with running a double levy for the spring of 2021.
All right. Do I have a second before we have a discussion on that?
I'm gonna break protocol. I guess just a clarifying question, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Was the use of the term "spring 2021" intended to give flexibility between February and April?
Yeah, that's a good question, because spring would more indicate April is, February is still technically winter.
My intent on that was that hearing Dr. Clark say he needs to speak to the levy committee, and I tell we need to give him some flexibility and room to have those discussions. And we can come back at our next board meeting or the one after that to pin down an exact date, if that's, knowing that a resolution is to the county for a February timeframe is the first part of December. I just want to give our superintendent some leeway there to work the problem a bit.
Would the gentleman consider a friendly amendment to targeting first half of 2021 with the comments noted about flexibility?
Mr. Chair, can I make a?
Yes, sure.
I wonder if, and Dr. Clark, if you want to weigh in on this too, I wonder if, does it make more sense? Are we really just trying to clarify at this stage, although we fully intend on running both these at some point? But are we really just trying to clarify that we're not going to run something in November? And maybe that should be the direction of the motion?
Well, the only thing that I would say is, maybe not the capital projects levy. We may decide for some reason or another that we choose not to run that in February, but we may choose to run it later from a, and I would guess maybe a financial standpoint, if the economy got shut down. But I'm telling you right now, we have to run the EPNO levy in February. That's a done deal.
Right. And Larry's had his hand up for a little while, so we'll kick Robert to the curb for a moment and let Larry jump in. Larry? You are muted, sir.
There we go. I'm on mute. Okay.
There you go.
Given what Dr. Clark said, I think, you know, it doesn't sound like he needs that flexibility, that he wants a February one. We have consensus here. I'm not sure we need to vote on it tonight. We have the meeting in July, July 20th, to vote a definite, you know, in a regular meeting. Would that be better, more appropriate?
I would like that. I always feel uncomfortable about taking action at a work session. You can legally, but I think it works better in a board meeting. You can always agree to consensus, but to take action at a work session, probably not, legally, you can't.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I was leaving it to the board. So Director Stoffer, I see your hands up.
Yes, Chair, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that would make sense to me. I think, again, as I stated before, that we have, I think we have a consensus here to just move forward with the concept of, we definitely need the capital or the EPNO levy, and dire need also of the capital projects levy. We know that we're, it sounds like we're all in consensus that we're not gonna in our best interest to not move forward for November, and just allot Dr. Clark some time to move forward. We've got the team meeting, we've got the town hall next week. It just starts giving us opportunity to gather that information. And, yeah, I don't see a need at this point even to really, you know, vote on anything until we're at a point to vote on running a levy, which we've got a little bit of time for that anyway. Larry, did you need to add something there? See your hand up, sir.
Yeah. Dr. Clark kind of alluded to it. You're gonna talk about like a time to get that committee together, and what are your plans? I mean, we have the November elections, plus November holidays, December holidays, winter break. And then we have to hit the ground running and have.
I'll have timelines. I will have timelines at the July board meeting.
Right, because it seems to me we need to get the public ready for this vote, starting here in the fall, winter. Because January is too late for a February 15th election. That was the date. But we need to get going right away.
Yep, I would agree with that. Yep, thank you, Larry. So, and again, I know that you've got the town hall set for the eighth, so that's kind of first conversation, starting at that point.
Yeah.
Really technically past the second, because we've had a couple, we've had other conversations, other town halls prior to this, but now this is really moving forward as we probably started having discussions with the community on more facts and all, in particular, probably more so with the capital projects and just the items at hand that we need to start working on.
Yes.
All right. Anything else we need to add?
I'm good.
All right, anything from the floor before we adjourn the meeting? All right, well, thank you, thank you, Dr. Clark, for the good thoughts in the presentation, good information there. Look forward to hearing more at our next meeting. We do have a little bit of time gap here. And before we adjourn, I just wish everybody a good weekend coming up here with the Independence Day holiday. Darlene, I don't know if you're out there, can hear us, just condolences to you and our thoughts to you from the board. And nobody else has anything else? Call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.